Long minute.
There it goes.
The planning commission meeting to order. Remember, you want that. The wise of the region should apply to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. David Wise.
Here.
Joyce McCord.
Here.
Melissa Conklin here. Russell Boshier.
I'm not here.
Larry Shively.
Here.
Mark Alexander.
He was just walking in the doorway.
Mark Alexander, Mark's here. There you go.
There you go.
David Hefman.
Here.
Close and done, and read over the minutes on our meeting second meeting. Franklin's Police Commission met on Monday, May... Oh, that was the wrong... Monday, June 2nd. At the Franklin's Police Station, those present were David Wise, Joyce McCord, Melissa Conklin, Russell Boshier, Mark Alexander, and David Hefman. Those absent were Larry Shively. Minutes read by Melissa Conklin, PC Secretary. Joyce McCord motion that minutes were made, actually made this. Twenty twenty-five, he accepted as read. Melissa Conklin seconded in the motion, seven i, six i, one absent. Jeez. Motion carried. And all business, new fee schedule. Joyce McCord motion, new fee schedule be tabled until February seventeenth. Melissa Conklin seconded, six i, zero nades, one absent, motion carried. Permit nineteen fifty-three, permit of brown town pool was complete and inspected by Cody. Permit closed. Um, permit for combining plat, permit nineteen sixty. Joyce McCord motion for application be approved. Melissa Conklin seconded, six i, zero nades, one absent, motion carried. Permit, permit nineteen fifty-six, the brown town pool at two thousand twenty-two South Lincoln, approved by Cody. Permit was issued on five-two. Permit nineteen fifty-seven, for fence, one thousand eight hundred. Approved by Cody. Permit was issued on five-two. Permit nineteen fifty-eight, left to upgrade, seven ninety, small net, approved by Cody. Permit issued five twelve point five. Permit nineteen fifty-nine, full deck, eight oh seven thousand eight, approved by Cody. Permit issued five seventeen point five. Permit nineteen sixty, for a new build, with a tape condition. For PC approval. Joyce McCord motion for permit nineteen fifty-six to nineteen sixty to be approved. Melissa Conklin seconded, six i, zero nades, one absent, motion carried. Video violations, point number zero five point one two point two five dash zero one for the seven east neighbor for mowing. Point number zero five dot one two dot two five dash zero two for mowing. And point number zero five dot one four dot two five dash zero one for other state buildings. None of the communications, video reports. None of the, none of the, from the, the White House committee, video committee. Next meeting is June fourth, twenty twenty-five. There were no comments or questions. Next everyone's meeting is July seventh. There's no further business. Joyce McCord motion did not move the meeting. Russell Boshier seconded, motion, six i, zero nades, one absent, motion carried, meeting. There he is.
Russ!
Anybody got any additions, corrections, any of that?
Other than the ones that I called out on the third meeting.
Anybody? Need a motion?
I'm making a motion, only ten minutes of correction.
Need a second?
I'll start.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote.
Okay, um, up next is the new, a new fee schedule that I've come up with for us to go over. So I tried to, a lot of, I did a lot of research looking at different permit fees for different ceremons, pounds, and kind of how they were charging, that kind of thing. To make sure that we're covering costs that are involved in it. There's, there's stuff that goes behind, goes on behind the scenes that people don't see that, you know, trying to make sure that the town's not losing money while doing these permitting. So it's kind of, it's broken down, um, and then how I kind of, I don't know, file things for every, I wanted to look over it, see if they had any, you know, changes, if they felt, you know, that kind of thing. I, um, went over some things with Cody, did double check, make sure, you know, on, you know, how many inspections were going to be required, that kind of thing. And I kind of, up at the top, there's a summary of what, you know, each of the different little categories that I have in here, what that cost is covering for the permit, so. Like I said, I just, I just want to make sure that we're covering, the town is covering all the costs that go, goes into the permitting process without overturning. I was not trying to make money off of people that were also, you know, losing money here. And I might totally find, we can take, everybody can take these home, I mean, there's a lot of information there for everyone to review, and then, you know, when we meet next month, we can kind of go into detail and see whatever, what notes everyone has.
That's what I like to do.
Yeah, what they don't, what you don't like, what you, you know, do like. If there's any typos in there, I looked through and I felt like I double checked five hundred times to make sure I didn't mess up on any forms or whatever happened, but obviously I'm not, I'm not perfect and I make mistakes, so.
You don't say that again?
No.
Something go on, I ain't supposed to do many things.
Yeah.
Is there a reason why this certificate of occupancy or compliance are different amounts?
Well, the certificate of occupancy, and this is where, what I was thinking, was... I didn't, I don't know, I just felt like smaller things shouldn't require, basically the, the certificate of occupancy and then the certificate of completion or compliance, whatever you want, basically, in the end, for me, is the way to kind of close out a permit, just to show, you know, you met all your requirements, that kind of thing.
So some of them are more complicated?
Yeah, they're more complicated than that.
I got you, I got you.
Then we'll make a motion for, for everybody to take home and review what have, what we've been ready to discuss for next month's meeting.
I'm making a motion after the fee schedule's been passed out, everybody has time to read it, and have any questions for next month.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Keep it moving, Mr. Russell.
Huh?
Keep it moving, Mr. Russell.
Yeah. Up next, permit nineteen forty-nine, which is for two oh eight Woodworth, um, that we approved for a new build. There was a neighbor that was concerned that part of the footer was impeding on his property. Cody went out and met with the builders, and it was determined that maybe the rents were taken incorrectly for where to place the footers. Cody informed the builders that they could, because what was forward that was close to the property locker, based on the property line, was footers for the garage. So Cody gave the builders the option, they could not use those footers and flip and put the garage on the other side of the house, or they could reduce the size of the garage to make it compliant with the, you know, setback so that it was not on the, um, neighbor's property. And the neighbor was there to discuss and was fine with either of those options, uh, rectification. So Becky Lucas from J-Pet, who's a contractor, contacted me and let me know that they, um, decided they were just going to shrink their garage from a twenty-foot garage, twenty-foot wide garage down to a sixteen-foot wide garage. Cody also informed them, as part of that, that they, um, also need to install extra drainage or swill on that side to help rectify any runoff that's going to come off of that building since it is where it's at. And I informed the contractor of this, as well as informed them that, um, once the footer subjects setback, that Cody has to come out and do another inspection before they move in further with the garage section of the house. Builders asked if they could continue on building the, um, actual living area, and Cody was signed with that as long as the planning committee was okay with that, and then we would, at that point, you know, need a revised floor plan, which is now in everybody's packet. I got that, that's what I handed out if you already had your packet and you did not. And it shows the, um, the garage door, not garage door, the garage, garage width being taken down to sixteen foot wide, um, which leaves an eight-foot setback on that side of the house. So we just need to, um...
Did they?
Approve.
Did they? What they do with the foundation?
I don't know.
Didn't change? She don't think so. Put that eighteen inches above the road.
I don't know if they actually started on two, the town outside of the footer.
They were digging down, and then I, I went by and it looked like it formed a footer almost on top of the ground.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's got to have an inspection, and I have to talk to Cody more about that's supposed to be up above the ground when you want to do that footers.
Yeah.
If they don't put them footers up, they're going to get another delay.
Yeah.
And the footers are horrible. They're wobbly and it's not very good.
It looked like they formed it on top.
Of the ground?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's what it looked like.
But it only blocked up to get their height?
I don't know, I didn't ask them.
Yeah, I don't know.
But it was very important that they got that eighteen inches.
Right, yeah.
Above the road.
Right.
And just for the PCs, the stormwater board is meeting the board Monday, and that area is being taken up, uh, to discuss how to eliminate the bottleneck to Woodworth and factory, because there's nowhere for that water to go. It comes from one twenty-eight and Logine, and so we're looking at eleven, the factory right now, adding, uh, some drains work there to get that water out of there. One twenty-eight took six hours to clear that, that manhole, and once it cleared, then here comes the stuff from Woodworth going in. So it took an additional six more hours, so it was there for almost fifteen hours after the rain, waiting to get up to eleven, which is endo string, it's not Frank's. It's an endo mass, so we're going to try to help them with that. Stormwater board will be meeting and try to eliminate that. The fourth, the fourth Monday of this month at eight o'clock.
You don't think the footer is right down there? You might mend it along that way.
I don't.
I was going over the weekend, but I did drive by there, and it looked like it formed them up, but they was around four mile, lit with slab or something, I didn't see them have anything, because they were already down. They were kind of in a hole, and they want, we wanted to get eighteen of them up the road, so they have to get it up about three, three feet, three and a half, but I don't know what they did.
They'll be knocked out here, but...
Yeah.
It looked like they formed, it looks like they formed the footer.
The footer's low. Footers only probably eight inches above the crown of the road, if that.
But they must have laid some blocks or...
Yeah.
Can you find out, Russell?
Yeah.
Russell went down there to meet him and keep an eye on him.
Just what they don't, it'll just, when that closes, it'll be in the floor, you know. You know, it's a real low spot, everything's grain in that direction, it's all directions. That's why there's a little...
So do we want to go ahead and approve for them to move forward with the stipulation that they make sure that they're meeting these requirements that they said they were going to?
And that they're eighteen...
Eighteen inches above grain.
I'd say I put in there eighteen inches above grain before they go any farther on that living.
It'd be above the road.
Or maybe back there, above the crown of the road.
Yeah.
Did we wait, though, until we get more information?
I think if they meet that too, it'll be okay.
Huh?
I think if they meet that height, then they can move the footer.
Yeah.
You know, I need to lose my two parts of the garage by the first...
Yeah. But we'll just reiterate, we've got Cody to go out there and make sure that they're following through.
Yeah.
They gotta get his...
That's, that's his, that's his job.
Yeah.
They gotta, gotta get his approval to move forward.
Right, yeah, so.
They're waiting on him.
Yes, he's okay with it, though, so I just wonder.
Yeah, well, as long as they do what he tells them to do, so, I mean, he's going to, he's going to be on top of them to make sure that they're doing the...
He really will now.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah. So...
We want a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
With revised floor plans and move forward with the building with the stipulations that eighteen inches above ground road.
Can I get a second?
Zach, a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I will say one thing. Brian, one was upset, upset at, as I would be.
No, I know.
He handled it good.
Yeah.
He did.
But here's a, here's a question for the...
Was this in the grounds?
He was...
No, the neighbor had not...
Brian, Brian Borum.
Here's a question for the planning commission. How do we, he had manships in the ground. Nobody checked to see if there was state survey. So how do we make sure this doesn't happen? Because according to their plans, they were in there right away. It's not up to us to check the state, so is it?
And Cody and I discussed that after this whole issue, and I just told Mark, because he, there's an application in him for him to do a new bill, that he, from now on, properties are going to need to be safe, and he's wanting people to measure from the back of the property line to get all the setbacks and everything laid out, to make sure, so that we don't run into this, this year again.
Yeah, because he had to dig down to get them. When I stopped there that day, he dug down to find his manship.
Yeah.
It was out.
Yeah.
You could see it.
So, yeah, so permanently, that's going to be a required thing that he's going to ask for, the contractor will ask for on these new builds.
On the, on a lot of additions, you know, they got winding roads and cul-de-sacs. I think it's pretty standard, builders have the surveyor come out and stake off the foundation.
Yeah, you should.
You did. I usually let the, because it's pretty hard to do it on that, you know, if you've got like a pie-shaped lot or triangle-shaped.
We did, uh, Brian, Brian Borum's got a, a plaque of that whole addition back there.
Yeah, he does.
He's got the original plaque. It's from like eighteen hundred and something. Uh, Aaron McCord was building back there then.
Adam McCord.
Adam, what I say, Aaron was Adam.
Yeah.
There is a difference.
Yes.
Um, there's no old video violations, no two public hearings, um, new permit, um, permit nineteen sixty-one for two oh four Central Electrical Permit was issued on June 2nd.
Hey, can I, uh, I got something to state on that, electrical. What a PC wants to do, here's what happened. I went with Scott Stanley. Electric got knocked down. We've got to have somebody come out and pull the meter, replace the meter head sometimes, sometimes do the electric box, and then we need it hooked up immediately. With our, with how we're doing it, with permits issued later, we got in two cases this month about getting electric back on. Because when you got the electric off, you don't have no electric to the house. And in the past, in other cities, as long as the electrician was licensed with the state of Indiana, when they pulled it and hooked it back up, they issued the permit right away, because you've got to get them back on.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
I hate to wait, I hate to wait a whole month. Now, if I'm doing a new addition, I need to plan it around the planning commission, where I'm changing the meter and the base, but when I get a, these storms, we had about six we did, where they pulled the weather heads off, and we've got to get them back up, but Scott wants permits, he doesn't want to go out without a permit. So he just asked me if I can bring that up, and Cody issues a permit right away.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't...
That's all right, that's all right.
Just thought everybody knows, so we don't keep people...
Yeah, so for like emergency.
Right, and if there was a dig or something with plumbing, where a lime in the yard busted, they get a permit to dig, a plumber, if he's licensed, should be able to get a permit right away.
Should we make, should we make a motion on that or not?
I think you'll have to make a motion to take it out of the, uh, out of the permit issued during the planning commission.
Well, I mean, the, the electrical, we've not been, we've been, I just am having Cody approve those.
Yeah.
So we're not letting, we're not holding up, you know, these smaller things.
We do all that, right? You've got three trades, you've got H fact, you've got plumbing, you've got electric. Them need the permits right away.
Right, yeah.
So you're landing good, and then we're going to give a vote.
Yeah. Uh, then permit nineteen sixty-two for eight twenty, Jefferson, that porch addition. Everyone has a copy of that permit packet. Cody has approved, what's true, the planning committee has approved, so we just can approve them.
Everybody knows where this is.
Huh?
Next door to Dave Rangre. Every, yeah, every, every gap there.
Right there.
Oh, hi, her.
Good thing we didn't say it was that bad.
Made a lot of work down to it and ready for the porch, you know. Looking really good, real.
Yeah, the plants are doing nice.
Huh?
The plants are doing nice. And you want to, and you want to motion for all of them? Yeah. And then make a motion to approve all of them. Okay. Uh, the next, on the list was, uh, there, yeah, for a fence, that permit has not been issued yet, because they've not paid. Then there's the above gown pool that Cody approved, they were replacing one that was already there. Nineteen sixty-five is a new build for a new home.
Where's that at? Right next to Sherri lines?
Where did that?
Where's the house right next to Sherri lines across the lot?
From the farthest east. I don't want to name which up there, it's like...
From the way...
Yeah. From the way...
On the right, like, it'd be on the...
Lay of that. Right before you go around that curve with the house and such, right there.
Yeah.
It's close to the house.
Maybe doing...
Yeah. Okay. But I don't want the neighbors up there.
No, 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 it's on the other side.
That's kind of lonely and we have creating problems. And we've got a house right beside it, so we'll put it at the same elevation as the neighbors. Talk to Cody about it, too, what he thought.
And on the north side or south side or?
North.
North.
Blue Dan, somebody live there?
There's one.
Does somebody live at Blue Dan?
Yeah, there's a house there.
There's a house there, it looks like it, but I think there is some.
I, uh, I haven't seen, we travel the road, and I haven't seen any water where my grandma never had.
So how much do we, we travel that rain, drove by, couldn't see anything?
My grandma lived across the street.
Oh, okay.
I never seen any water in there, I don't know. We've been having to check the drains.
Yeah.
You know, just check the drains and stay above the crown of the road.
I always want to go, because there is a house right there.
Right, right.
So I don't want, I want to go...
Wait up.
Yeah, I want to build a relationship with the crown of the road and the house, so it's...
What about that mile? What do you, what do you say to him?
As far as the elevation, I want to go off the crown of the road and the existing house assists to the east. So there's an assistancy in the neighborhood, you know, I'm one seven way high, one seven way low. I don't know what that elevation is, I haven't shot anything up there, but tell me what that is.
Yeah, usually it'd be about eighteen inches, so...
Shouldn't be a problem.
Because you don't want that driveway to drain out of the road, you know. And if it was bad, like in the safer, I built someone here, they raced it like a bullet
You had everything, everything stuck.
It's kind of, yeah, you got like a valley, sidewalk, plus. If you try to build it look nice, a few years from now, they race further, whatever, it really causes a lot of problems.
Yeah, I think eighteen, sixteen, eighteen, fifteen, fourteen, fourteen, the road would be looking good.
And your crossface will be like, too, you don't want to plant too...
Yeah, I don't want...
So, yeah, it's a, that crossface, a ladder, you can sink it too low. You look at it, I didn't see anything.
Uh, then, uh, permit nineteen sixty-six was approved by two eighty... Uh, then, uh, permit nineteen sixty-six was approved by Cody, uh, for a new electric sign for, for. I made a different plan for that.
It's gonna be digital.
No, not digital.
Have you seen, ever have signed, maybe not the digital sign?
Yeah, it, I, it, I was wary of it when I heard that they were doing it, but it was, it was.
Sign that Jamie made up for?
Mm-hmm.
It's pretty cool.
Yeah.
The sign made it up.
Yeah. Um, so, okay, that's it, that's the next, so if you wanna motion then.
I'd like a motion.
I'll make a motion, the permit number nineteen sixty-two, sixty-one, sixty-six, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six. All be approved.
Give me a second.
I'll see you.
Give us a second. All in favor.
Alright. Oh, yeah, lady.
And the, the new house.
That was approved, that was approved by Cody.
Luranda.
Yes, how are you?
Alright, been a long time since you.
I know.
How you been?
You guys hyped with that new house?
Are you staying out of trouble?
Oh, yeah.
On the woodwork?
Yeah, alright.
Yeah, yeah.
Aaron don't work like he needs to. He don't work like real well, so he don't, I gotta say. Right, Aaron?
I forgot she thought no one, what did you say again? Did her, did that?
I love being up there with three. I have eyes.
No, I've had some in the last three.
Yeah.
Good change, yeah, man.
See you, Aaron.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Couple of acres, we're gonna make.
When they get back in? Nothing for me.
Okay, hey, we was talking about something else. Uh, I saw you re- you was, uh, taking some business, uh, of course, I see you, Mark.
Good, Eric.
Out of coal, you're still in the truck, out of coal.
Oh, yeah. I almost, I almost caught you. Almost got caught.
I got notified.
I think you can walk on any shore now with whatever you want, and nobody stops you, so.
I haven't tried that.
Well, I haven't either.
On Fast Street Street, I got notified that somebody was putting up a fence at a shed.
At a shed?
And a shed. Fence and a shed. So I go up there, had somebody, I used to work in the school for over a year. And I'm, I'm told that, replacing the shed, it was there the same size, and the fence is going back in the same place. So I said, well, pass the case, no big deal. I said, you know, probably there are no more.
See.
Well, today I find out, so I haven't been a checker. The shed is done. They did it, took whip, that's the best time for you to sneak something in, is over a holiday weekend. So, the shed done, the fence this morning was almost, um, I wasn't worried about the fence, I was worried about the shed. So, get the shed already there, I took it worth. Well, I found out today, she notified me.
Well, we, we could just send him a letter, say you just need to get a permit, you've got so many takes and after that, yes.
I told him he needed a permit, and he said, I'm replacing one that was already there. Well, I've backed if I ever seen the shed back there. I don't go stupid around any people backyard, see what they got. You know? So.
So I pulled up and I looked on Google, Google Maps, the, the satellite, and as far back as I could go where it can tell what was there, some of the, when you get, you get like two, early, two, mid, two thousands, it's really weird, you can't really tell. But two thousand eight, I think, was the last view that I could see, and there was no, you could see.
You can't.
Like the foundation of where one was, but there's, there's not been a shed there.
You can't replace the shed twenty-five years later.
Right, yeah.
Oh, well, twenty-five years ago there was a shed here, I'm just putting another one, yeah.
So, right.
He can pay for it as I pay for mine.
Right, yeah.
Well.
So.
He just had to get a permit, it's cost seventy-five bucks. Right?
Well, it's gonna be heaven, Matt.
Well, I'm just asking Dave, what do you think? I just, he can get his permit, if that get in a week, it'll double or something.
That's what you need to do.
Cuz it's down there, they doubles if you. Yeah, you can say, hey, or maybe. Where I get a permit, fine, you know, have a certain.
If we issue a fine, it should be as much as the permit would have been.
Yeah, and then that's what the fine.
The fine is doubled, the permit.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's a hundred fifty bucks.
I don't know, I wanted to bring it up, this last year, because it kinda pisses me off.
I get you. Would be too. They can slip shed in pretty fast, up behind Rickers, which is a two-story. And they put like a sixteen by forty shed in there.
There was a two-story.
I'm not Rickers, but bottom of the gym, you know, there's a couple two stories, it's the one on. This is about a month ago. I noticed it, and I seen him going, they have that thing in there set, and I'm like, yeah.
Are you talking about two-story or you talking about?
It's a two-story house, I think, but. Remember, I should, I think I showed you.
A model.
No, is it?
No.
But it's on the corner.
Yeah.
Well, they slipped that dude in there and this long shed. I'm sure it's forty, like thirty-two, forty-three, long, sixteen, wow. Now, they go quick. They can move that man. They go by it, they'll.
Yeah.
But walk.
Yeah, I think that one, there was, they got a permit for that, and it was, it was a free main, they just drove it in.
They get a permit for that. I even say something last week, but I'm like. No, they haven't permitted.
Well, I know the Abbot Joe out there don't know all the rules, you know. But when I went up there to check on it, he was gonna swing in the road and take mine out.
I'd say, we send him a letter, you have a week to get your permit, and you know what, you're gonna pay the, the fine now, and if you don't get it within a week, you're gonna pay another fine.
You can send him a little picture of Google or, and say, you know, maybe it was there twenty, thirty years ago.
Yeah.
He told me they were replacing one of the dirt same size. I assumed that they tore that one down and put another one up, you know.
I get you.
That's going on the world.
And you knew he meant it, did you, you used to work with him, you said? You got that taken in order.
Well, you said, you lived across three years ago, you would have seen, I said, I don't go looking in people's backyards.
Just windows.
So, I mean.
He didn't hear that.
How, what's the best way to handle this?
That's the best way, send him a letter.
Send him a letter.
You don't wanna take it up, do you? Would you like to take it up to him personally?
Right now, no.
Okay. Just send him a letter. Say, do his talk, not, law on rules.
Your permit is this, and the fine is this, and he will tell you this, then you bring it up. Violation on the.
I feel like, you know, I told you this morning, with my, when I redid my debt, I felt like I would go for a building permit and everything too. I really do.
I think we ought to double it.
Seriously, I, I mean, you know, David and I talked over before and done, and David said, I don't, I, I don't see where you need a permit, but I do, I feel, if somebody looks at it and says, you know, so I would like to pay whatever it's gonna cost to get a, get a building permit and everything, even though it's already done. But that's not finished yet. I still gotta put some railing out that, that I could add before, but I changed everything around. And the only thing I added, I added, I did add a metal roof to the top of it, so I'd like to.
You paying tomorrow's?
I'm seeing tomorrow.
Okay, I'm gonna see you tomorrow.
I'm, I'm gonna, you know, reach this season, Amanda, so.
But I, you know, I feel bad, cuz I knew, everybody else is happy, and I, I feel like I owe too. Another way to thank you, they come back and say, no, he, he paid it, I don't wanna pay.
Can we go on here for a while?
It's not four bars.
Which one?
Probably four.
Oh, yeah, one or two.
Oh, probably four. They put a small bed in there.
You ready?
Big old roof on the pool.
We gotta tell everybody.
Oh, five or four walnut, they got building that deck, and it's got a big old roof on it.
Yeah.
We saw that too.
Yeah, and it's behind the fence, but I seen them building it.
Yeah.
We'll see.
Pool.
Yeah.
That pool, and they're.
Probably got a permit or not.
I don't, off the top of my head, I don't think that, it's a hard little shed. I'll build a shed tomorrow. I mean, and it could be one of those things that maybe a permit was issued before I was here, and then.
So good for two years.
Yeah, so.
Good for two years, you have to go back.
I will research.
All you have to do is, is notify them and say, do you have your permit?
Yeah.
I mean, I gave mine, mine was nine months old before I did that shed, so.
Yeah. Okay, um, UDO violations, and then one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Uh, unsightly parents, or foul men, helping standard, race bringing, mowing, mowing, and sunlighting vehicles.
What's, what's the addresses on these?
I didn't, if you would like to have them, I can email them to you.
No, I just, I, there's a couple that I've been checking on, working with. Factory Street, Steve, he's, he, uh, he's at, uh, he's on, uh, Park Street.
Hmm.
He's, that they did some cleaning up on the north side, they're moving rock, came to redo the driveway, make the driveway good. Everything around the house except the north side looks really good, and they're moving on with it.
They, they done two big lodges.
Yeah, he's gonna put stone and, and the.
It's not stone, he put, he put.
And buildings.
What they have, yeah.
Uh, but he's trying to get it cleaned up, he's cleaned up the front of the garage a little bit.
He just closed the garage door, right door? He needed to close the garage door.
I told him close the garage door.
I know, did you? That's the right door.
That's the easy pick.
Yeah.
I think he can.
No, he closed it the other day.
Oh, did he?
Yeah.
Well, he would've had to move a lot of junk out of the way.
No, he wouldn't close, I had to show him a picture.
These, you know, you think about it as, like, like, it'd be nice to know who needs all of them. Should I, should I get them off you?
Did you miss that?
I missed it. I was looking for something.
She said she knew them. What about, what about his shed?
The shed across the street, I haven't heard nothing. Russell, did you hear anything about that lady on the corner, there by Gaskell's, got the, got the two sheds, sit behind the house? I haven't heard anything, but I experienced. I can't get her at that house. I, I, yeah, Russell.
I think, well, cuz you said something about talking to that P D guy, this P D team was.
Right, I did. I told Steve to go talk to her and see if he can tear that board. She's also got her brother, her brother-in-law is severely tear now.
That's what she told me when I started that up.
Yeah.
So maybe she needs a reminder.
Okay.
I would say.
I'll do a reminder letter.
Tell her she's got one week to get you an answer, I think. Um, I was telling one week, cuz we tried to notify, and she's got people who are tear now. She did mobile on.
Hmm.
And I got, Steve, I've got to, I got him, he's calling, working on it too.
Yeah, I know.
Did, did you guys send the letter to eight oh four Maple?
Eight oh four.
Off the top of my head, I'm not. That's why they got a dumpster sitting there, that it's full.
We ain't look really bad in there sometimes, I figure maybe you guys sent a letter.
Oh, um, uh, they're.
Go for Jim.
Ready for his old house.
Yeah, the old man.
I don't think I've had any, I've not gotten anything about that.
He's not alive.
You guys haven't seen.
No, but.
Not that I, that doesn't sound familiar to me.
They have played with.
It's just about two more stuff on the outside of it.
They put, they listed siding on there.
Have a curb.
They got a lot of siding on there, yeah.
What is, what's that?
But they had a dumpster.
These are, these are the houses.
Maple.
I think it's a house. Maple, I'm sorry, maple.
It's set right in between them.
Okay.
You know where it is, it's that, where those dogs are at, yeah, running around, it looks like they're starting to.
I've seen it now.
I'll be dead.
They, uh, everyone's, uh, two neighbors called about, uh, had to go out and look at, uh, Ronnie Hobbs' old house, the Wiggins. They asked if we could do something to get them to clean that up and move along. It's pretty high.
I've not seen anything about that either. What is it?
Did you live right?
We're not at there.
No, not. Yeah, who is that? What's the Wiggins, Ronnie Hobbs' old house?
Three oh eight fly, three oh.
Three oh fly.
Three oh, yeah. I was real sick.
Three oh four?
Very good.
Three oh eight fly.
Three oh eight fly.
Mode, is that right?
It may be.
Mode is a lot, like junk vehicles.
Oh, I, I would have to go over there. I know where it is. It's based on.
Three oh eight fly.
I think, there are all those different things. It's right next to where Dave grew up.
Okay. Grew up.
Hey, did you, is that where you? Did you?
No, it's bad, Dave.
He never grew up.
Bill be going.
She's the one that authorized that grave. Here about four years. And the girl that organized the grave.
Russell's here, okay.
Oh, they had a mock room, I think you said.
Yeah, okay, about that. Anywhere, any other address that you need to add?
Yeah, I do have two.
Okay.
There's one here, and it's vacant, I don't know. Six oh eight Walnut.
Yeah, that's where, uh, the lady that run the market.
Oh, yeah. When did you go by there? Because I, we sent a letter.
Six oh eight. Yesterday.
Look what I'm living in.
Oh, that's, they moved down town.
Yeah, they need to go back in springtime.
You go by there, Mark?
Yesterday.
I took pictures yesterday.
Where they had the two cars, you guys.
The cars are gone.
Yeah, I know, the cars are gone, that's.
Yeah, well, cuz they, David ran out to start to get their car tag, and he came in and told me he needed mowed, and then, who was it, Vicki, was it Vicki that went by? Somebody had went by and said that they had mowed it in the car.
It's all weed, you did that in.
It's not flowers.
Yeah, they planted them.
They planted a garden in the front.
Yeah, they're flowers.
And the whole front yard was not weed. They put them with flowers, you can raise that.
I think it's a mixture of.
Him or.
His number is seven one zero, seven zero, seven six.
They moved the green fielding, so.
Six oh eight Walnut.
Green, yeah, green, yeah.
Seven one zero, seven zero, seven six. I didn't give.
Oh, what's, which one's this?
Oh, we have a number.
Oh, you do.
I'm pretty sure.
See, this is the east side.
What's this?
I was on a flight tour and.
Probably, I think it is.
What's this?
See this? See this pile?
That is.
Maybe one.
Yeah, that's, uh.
Oh, you've gone on about that before?
Nine oh nine Sigler, he's got some more pictures on that.
He's a repeat offender.
Okay.
He lives outside of town. That's, his mom and dad live there?
Oh, that, why, yes, I know what you're talking about.
What was Meadowland? Oh. What was that, that really?
Dave knows where that is.
Nine oh nine Sigler.
LeShure.
Sigler. Right there at the corner, LeShure.
Oh, it's fantastic forever?
Yeah.
LeShure.
It's mommy that's there. So we sided him for unsecured, can fix the floors, put panel board up, windows, and we.
Do you know where Owing's婶?
And he put a new sewer and Russ, you cited him for the weeds and, uh, got all the weeds.
Oh, you mean your greens are home?
Yeah.
Yes.
Your greens are, that's where Dave Green grew up.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I don't know where you're coming from. Yeah, that's it right there.
Yeah, but the east side of Grub, it's got like fifteen foot trees and then they're in a pile of debris. They're. It's been fifteen, twenty years.
You better, Melissa, you better be very explicit in what you ask for because we cited him for sewer and he put a new sewer. We cited him for unsafe and no windows and he put boards, boards up over the door. Then we cited him for his roof and he put a, if you can call it a new roof. And he just does exactly what you put on that letter. And then he'll quit. It's been going on for years, ain't it, Dave?
Yeah.
Years.
I thought it'd be condemned and tore down.
Any others?
I thought it'd be condemned.
When you get, the ones you've issued.
I didn't expect, the state inspector said it was.
People complaining or something by just.
Oh, who has?
Or consensus, that's bad.
Do you, do you make them fill out a form? Do they call in and you just take it or do you make them fill out a form? They're, well, they're, if someone calls in or comes in, there's a form that gets filled out. They don't have to leave their name to say who it is that's complaining. Right, right. But, yeah.
You don't know why you should have to do that.
Right, yeah, no, but, yeah.
There should be a form.
That's not what I was told.
The right, yeah.
I was told I had to put my name down and I argued with him about that.
You shouldn't have to do that.
I know, I said, I said it's a free of, a free of access, he didn't, I said, no, they don't. I don't wanna cause trouble with my neighbors.
Well, if you're gonna do your, you need to let me know and all. But, yeah, there's no.
There's two places I wanna buy it down. There's two places I wanna buy them down. Everybody needs to listen to this. Two places I wanna buy them down. One of them is North Walnut Street, where it quits to the creek.
Oh, yeah, I just.
And, and also from Walnut Street, from where it quits to the creek. I got a property back there I can't even get to. I can't, I used to keep it mowed, kept it weeded and everything else. Now I can't even get to it. I would like to buy both of those so I can take care of it.
Who owns them?
The town.
Oh.
The town owns it?
The town owns it. The town owns them and, and I wanna buy them with the, with the thing that whenever anything happens to me, it goes back to the town. I don't wanna, I don't, you know, I just wanna own them so I can clean it up.
It's a walnut over here?
Walnut, yeah, where, you know, where makes the band that's all, you know, that, that garden down there is mine. I wanna go all the way straight through there. The man tells me he owns half of that and I own half of that and I told him, I said, we don't own any of it. But yet, the half that you say that I own, you got stuff on there I can't even get to.
Is that on the rubber property?
No, 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 I own that house, but you know where Dorothy lives?
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
I know. I mean, it's terrible. And I wanna buy them. I mean, any way I can.
You have to.
PC to look at it and see if I can buy it. The town owns it.
If the town decides to sell, they have to post it.
Yeah, we have to post it.
If they, if the, if the town decides to sell, it has to open a bid. And you have that bid on it just like everybody else.
Who else is gonna be against me?
Nobody. You can't build on it anyway.
No, no, there's no building there.
Yeah, I don't see anybody ever wanting to buy it unless the neighbor wants to buy it.
But you have to put it up for bid, Mark.
Yeah, yeah, I would say so. You'd have to look there. Cause I probably wouldn't look at town board member to get a special deal. I'm not saying.
Oh, no, I agree with you.
And I don't have any intentions, but.
Yeah, I tried to do it even before coming here.
Here's, here's what, let's do today. Um, during the town board meeting, the next town board meeting, when you get ready to speak, do your whole thing. At the end of it, we'll recuse Russell. Make you go outside. You ask me and Vicki about that project. He can't be there when he decides.
That sounds pretty fair.
Well, if he don't wanna be there, cause then it'll look like.
Right.
They just, you, you recuse yourself, probably.
It'd be a personal thing.
There's two of them.
Two of them.
There are two of them or just one? How many properties is it telling me about? Two?
Two lost.
Well, there's, well, that's, I don't know if, how, how that is set up or, cause ten lost and they're all together, I own them. I should've bought a whole stinking mess, I might've bought. I had a chance to and I should've, but I didn't.
Is that, who owns the old sum mill?
David.
David Stowers. That's D O W E R S.
He started both sides of that building.
Yeah, he's both sides of that one building, finally, yeah. I mean, he's a nice guy. I, but he doesn't live in this town and.
Oh, yeah.
I, I catch it from a wife or a family down, down by the, I mean.
Oh, it's awful, isn't it?
She writes me, she said, you look.
Dangerous.
It is a, it is a risk. Kids in there playing around. And I, I checked the vehicles. Nine out of ten of them don't have plates on them.
Who are just there?
That's all.
Oh, you talk about his women.
Yeah.
Cannibal.
Well, anything that's drivable, bro, you know. I won't count his women.
You know the, the area that you were talking about, let's try to find. So where is it that you were talking?
North Walnut Street.
The walnut, there's the curb.
Okay, right there's the curb. It goes, walnut, you struggle straight across there. And then, and then Jackson Street comes down right here, right here. I wanna buy this, that.
I mean, that's still, that's still road.
It's still road, yeah.
Yeah, it's walnut and.
Walnut and Jackson.
But, but, but it's not been approved upon, like it's.
You missed it.
The streets?
Yeah.
No, he's good. Come on in, bro.
It's a note, please.
That's what he has right there.
It's a note, please.
Right there.
Did what?
Oh, you gotta, your road, please. You gotta do.
Come on in.
Hey, Russell.
Yeah.
You gotta do a row. You gotta petition to abandon Jackson and Walnut.
Yeah, how do we do that?
You gotta get with all the owners that touch the other side of the road and all of you gotta agree and you get a, then you petition the board to vacate the right way. And you get half and they get half.
The only ones I'd have to hit would be Dorothy and, uh.
David Stowers. Oh, no, and he, and he next to the guy there on the corner.
Yeah. They were, they were walking.
You get the, you get the other two people, Dorothy and the other guy, and you, you petition to vacate that two roadways. And you get half and they get half. But your problem is Jackson Street can't be vacated now because maintenance manager is down. Jackson can't be vacated.
So they would put it in there.
It's a utility.
Yes, sir. Well, if those are right ways, you got access to them.
Well, I've got access to them.
They just wanna get it and clean it up.
I wanna clean them up. I can't clean them up with stuff on. Just can't get to it.
No, the one, the one, the Jackson.
The Jackson's not so bad, but the Walnut's.
The Walnut, you can request, uh, to vacate right away.
Okay, that's what I would do. They kick right away on Jackson.
Yeah, but you just.
Probably Walnut.
You got a petition and then once you get it, if they approve your petition, then you get a lawyer to draw, draw up the ordinance with you and the, the person next across the street. And he draws up the ordinance and everything.
You have a lawyer to get David to do it too, since he's, he's on, he'd be on the south side of it.
If he's.
He's on the south side.
If he's touching the road, you have to. But he picks up that though. It's the only way you can do it. You gotta vacate right away. For Jackson. And it's been done. They're just in, uh, Four Street up there.
Hey, Brian, that is on first, if I, if I do that and he's got half of it, he's still gonna be on mine. He's doing fixes where I can't get to it.
I understand. Brian's here. You wanna explain what you, uh.
Plan born.
Okay.
Woodworth.
Um.
Explain what the most and most for that. Do you have anything, do you have anything to say on that?
Well, you're not telling us anything.
So, returning, I, were you there when Cody, the building inspector was out there? Yeah. So he gave the builders the option that they could either eliminate those footers and flip the garage over to the, the other side of the property or they could shrink the size of the garage to allow for the proper setback on that side because they did take their measurements incorrectly. Um, and for that, doing that, they, he informed them they're gonna have to put a swell or drainage along that side of the house between their property and your property to, um, alleviate any runoff from that house going over to, to you. They're already set to put in a drainage ditch along the road and have drainage going out, out towards the front of the house. And then this way, then there's gonna be drainage to go along that side of the house and between their property and yours to help with the stormwater as well.
So they're gonna build a migraine around that too. I mean, they have to begin to put a swell in there.
Yeah, well, more likely drain, like a drainage pipe, I think is what.
Is it a drainage pipe or just where they're gonna taper?
It just said they was, it was on here what they said. I wasn't there until she did that.
They're still pushing water over on it. It don't matter where they put a swell in the car.
It's, it's.
They're pushing the water off of them on me to get it down to the drain.
No, they're pushing it to south.
Huh?
If we push the water to the south.
Yeah, yeah.
Where's your water coming?
It goes to.
It goes on that property?
Well, that, there's two lots, both our lot and their lot. Right in the middle is the low spot. And more so probably on our side than their side.
Yeah, it looked like yours.
I mean, I got water standing up there now. I mean, and it wasn't causing rain last night because when they poured the footers and tore the ground up and I got a big hole there and there's water standing there now. And that's not, gonna be nothing but a stream to come out there.
And that was something that, did Cody have them, I never even thought about that till right now. Did Cody have them fix his ground or his door down?
Oh, yeah. Oh, would he?
Well, no, but I mean, that's something that he can do. I don't, I don't know. I've only gotten the summary. I wasn't there. I don't know everything that was discussed, but.
But then to put a swell in, we're gonna have to put a migraine and migraine too. Because they ain't, they put six foot swell in, they ain't far enough off the property line to even do that.
On the south side. Dave stated that they were gonna install a swell, a drain on that side of the property.
That's what Cody quite told them. If they were going to shrink the garage, they had to do a swell or drain to alleviate the runoff from going onto, to their house, to their property.
Will you guys be starting another drain back through?
I'm not gonna go on private property. We will go in front of the right way.
Okay.
Uh, we're having a stormwater board meeting, the board Monday, uh, to look at that. To look at the, uh, storm back there and get that to get out into the factory and wood.
It's gotta get out. Cause I've got water coming in.
I know we got water. I've got the funds. I've just gotta get the engineer to get it done.
I mean, even, even if they put a swell, they're still pushing water. I mean, cause you have to build that ground up eighteen inches before, um, to build there, plus put a slab underneath of it, a slab house. So, I mean, all that water was there is pushed to me to the south because I'm the lowest spot in there.
So when they get the footers and everything, now Cody's still gotta go out and inspect the footers. He'll have to inspect the swell and drain and they've gotta put something there that keeps it all up.
I don't understand why one of the inspectors was first. I mean, before they even put it in.
He did, uh, the inspector went out there.
Yeah.
They had it staged.
They had it.
They, they supposedly had it staged.
Yeah, they had it staged, but they had no idea where the property line was. I had to show them where the property line was and not once did they pull a string down that north side property and measure off whatever six foot the tail makes and be off the property line. They just went and started digging. They just set stakes and started digging and they ain't two foot off my property line.
We got the inspector up there and he told us.
Okay, is there anywhere the water can go up there?
The water from the side of his house?
Well, the stormwater, is there a drain up there anywhere?
There is a drain, but it don't work right now. They, Endog decided to open up the two ten inch drains and make it even worse than it already was. It made it worse than what it was, but we, we've got a solution to get that water out of there. I see what the problem was.
And two, when they went up there and fixed that line to put in, down that east one, to the trailer park.
The water?
Yeah.
Water line?
Yeah, when it come, fixed it, they already built, built that ground up higher than it was. So, I mean, I, I, I mean, it all runs there with that low spot.
Correct. It, it can't get in a drain cause of drainage, no. This twelve inch drain.
Well, I know, but, but, but they're just pushing more water down there too.
Right. They, they just got nowhere to go. It had to wait six hours before it can do the factory and wood.
Well, I know, but then you, you let somebody build in there and raise the ground up. That's what, that's what gets me. I mean, I don't think it even, should've even been started. I mean, Chuck Colton wanted to build up there and they shut him down when he wanted to get the storage buildings building in. And one reason why is cause it was, it's residential, he was on permanent first, but another reason why is because of the drains it's facing. And they denied him.
I hear you.
Is there any place you can run six inch line to?
The stormwater's gonna be, the board Monday. There's a lot going on up there. They tied that into a lot of gene, that well inside it, tied it into a lot of gene.
Oh, okay.
And now they're letting Long Gene put more and more sewer in there. Well, it comes out and comes in front of the houses and there's two drains there. But it goes to Woodworth and Factory, which has been all right, except they then tied that into the state drain and left it to Factory. And the state then put in two ten inch drains out on one twenty-eight and that east one from right there by our showers. They, there's a line comes across there and comes from now the water was in elementary, they're throwing even more water over there. They put drains and Endog don't care enough. But we got, uh, engineers to be here a week from Wednesday, just over that situation, that one right there. To get that done and there is fun to get that water out of that area.
I'm flooding my neighbors back yard now.
I know, I know everybody. I mean, it takes a little bit of time.
Do we just have them stop work until?
That's what I'm saying. Have them, no more, no building there until they get the water situation fixed. Because building there is just gonna cause more problems for everybody on that quarter without them doing something with the water. I mean, that's been like, feels like when we lived up there when we was a kid.
I know, what?
That water stood up, we lived there for thirty-three years and there's always been, we get a big rain.
When I was a kid, the long gene trailer park and all that back there, Valswalks, just doing all that back there, we didn't get the clothes. And when they started putting that addition and long gene truck. And when they started putting that addition, and Long Jean, trailer park in there, and then it started flooding. I only lived there till sixteen.
But it's been many years. That's why Allen Corr didn't build on that, did two lots, three lots there. Because he knew it wasn't worth building on, 'cause it's the lowest lots in, in the, in the district.
I, I agree with you.
They've only started one.
You what?
I enjoyed for that, even though if there were two houses or more.
There's two though, right?
They only started one.
Well, you have to do, he's gotta be quite... Well, I guess PC's job is to protect the existing homeowners before they let anything else happen.
I have no, I don't have any issues with us saying you guys gotta wait until we figure out what this...
Well, I don't know if you can do that, to be honest with you.
Well, they've been told to stop work. They've been told to stop work.
Well, but I don't know what the problem is, is when you build, when you build on there, if they need, what the requirements are to get the water off the property.
I feel something, even if they can't let it on somebody else's property, they can't.
Correct. If they put a drain beside it and it goes out in the right of way, they could do that all day long. That's, I think that's wrong.
Well, we got it down here. Cody is okay with this. He's continuing work with tiny community approval. I really don't think we ought to approve it. And then we get all that straightened out.
We've already approved and very approved.
But you haven't left yet.
Well, they could just, they could probably build the house and not fill in on that side, but they just try to address it.
Well, the thing you got is, you got, Cody's gotta inspect the footers and everything. And if the drains and that stuff that they say is not right, you don't have to approve the permit. I mean, he can stop work until he get it right, until he's good with what they're doing inside them yards. And that's why you got inspections.
Well, I know when they approved it, you kinda thought like they was gonna be running stuff through Vows Logs and they was gonna take care, you got plans to take care of it.
We do. And I got the funding?
And, and I, I'm, I'm getting on you if I don't need to, but, you know, we approved it with all that being said too.
Yeah, we got the, uh...
But it's an unforeseen issue that has come up.
Well, it's gotta get settled here. What's really Brian, state law, if you could build up that property twenty feet and run it on you, there's nothing you can do about it.
Correct.
That's the, that's the law. Now, if they channeled, if they channeled water onto you.
Right.
It has to be channeled, like in a pipe. Like, say they run their gutters over into yours, or they had a drain and it was in a pipe, then you could say something, but... And I, I've come across this before, you know, once ago. I'm not telling, but it should be settled here somewhat. We've got the Michaelson, who's already approved it from that, but... I, somebody's just gotta go up there and say, "We could get water."
Four sixty. Four and a half.
What, what'd you say?
On the, on the stormwater, over just his... So, board Monday is the earliest I can meet, but I meet him, but I bring any engineers in a week from Wednesday. And the number one priority is his area.
Okay.
That is the number one priority, 'cause it's a mess down there. And they're getting ready to do more drainage stuff than Long Jean.
Will that belong to Brian?
Yes.
All that water from Long Jean's coming.
All the water from Long Jean, they're moving over there by there.
It's gonna be, it's for the will to go in.
No, but they ain't got nowhere to go.
I know.
Woodworth, Woodworth and Factory took six hours before they would even let anything off that area go in that manhole. And I stood there. I got the picture. I get out and this stuff. I don't just talk about it.
Well, I think somewhere you gotta come up, come up a little bit of plans. I'll see where it stops.
There's Woodworth and Factory.
I'm gonna tell you what, I had the back, I had the back door a hundred percent, 'cause he does more beyond the scenes than what anybody in this town can ever, ever imagine. I mean, that man's out. He's out eight to six to eight hours every day checking this stuff, and I, and I commend him for it. I've even asked him to, to help, if he needs help, to give me a call. But he doesn't, been on his own, and he's doing a great job.
That last flood, Brian, was like eight inches. They were pretty bad, 'cause it got up pretty high in Penn. So I stood out there. I come back about ten times in that rain and looked at Woodworth and Factory. And from Howard Sowers, there's a pipe that comes across that Eastman, Woodworth Eastman, by Howard Sowers. I didn't even know that thing was there. It's not on no prints. And it was coming in first, and I thought, well, why's it coming in? There ain't nothing on the north side. And they put a ten-inch collar up there by Russell's, and a ten-inch down by Giggel. So that's when I got ahold of everybody, and I said, "We gotta do something, 'cause the state's just took all the elementary water down and dumping it on Factory and Woodworth." They're dumping it there. That, that thing stayed full, and as soon as it went down enough, that twelve-inch hit, that water took about six hours and it was gone. But, I mean, hell, it was already halfway up in Penn, and I've seen it up back behind the house in the alleyway.
All right, that is my Ansoose's house.
Yeah, Ansoose's. I've seen it back up there, so I told them, uh, just, well, three days ago, I just got okay with the funding, so I can do something. So I gotta get eyes on it, get the engineer, do elevations, and get something done, but I, I'm gonna try to get it done as quick as I can, get rid of that water.
I don't think you're gonna help the job.
This is gonna happen this year, you think?
I don't know. The funding's there. You just gotta engineer it, so it's right. You can't, I can't just throw something up. I can't throw something up, and then it's wrong, and then I create a bigger mess. I gotta shoot some elevation, see how much water's flowing through. It usually takes me a couple, two, three months. I don't know if they'll have them houses built by then. But it is, it is a number. Nobody's giving me any grief about it, so... There's two places. That's in, I got E. Colai and Sherman Street in somebody's house.
Ah.
So they are gonna have to move the house, though?
They have to move the house.
That's a definite.
They're, they're moving, making the garage smaller.
Yeah.
They're supposed to move it eight foot inside of your property line. And that gives them eight foot to do something.
But it'd be fine.
Yeah.
But here's the thing. I think the side of that house is like this, correct? The side of the house is tempered on the side, correct?
Gable on the side.
The gable on the garage? It can't be, because the garage is gonna, gotta be gabled like this to the mark to drive inside. So the gutters are gonna be on his side. You're gonna have to leave a note for Cody and ask him out there on the handle, with the gutters being on his side, and get that water off.
I, well, I will call him and discuss everything that we talked about.
Well, I know it could be, I just did my outside, just put a French drain all the way around my house to keep the gossip behind me to build build up his yard and dump the water in my crawl space.
But even the French drain, you guys have a place for it to go to?
It goes out to the side into a swell that goes out to the road. But the problem is, there's...
There's no place for that to go to up there?
No, down Eleventh and Pope, and then it goes down Christie and then back to the building.
No, I mean, where Brian's at, there's really no place for it to go to, is there? The water?
Factory and Woodworth, but there's no room in there to get it in there.
Okay.
There's none. They're out of it forever. And then we used to have water leaks across them to, uh...
You don't think that's blocked or anything, do you?
That's part of it. We'll get it all out, 'cause there was some water standing. When I went in after the flood, there was some water standing right there where he's at. There was water standing in the pipe.
It might pay to have that hooked. It would take long, but look at that, go with it.
No, it, just get it by the camera through it. I wanna see if it's got valleys. I might have to rerun it and get the ball right, 'cause I'm not sure if those are, got the ball correct. It doesn't matter. It ain't gonna go in that Woodworth and Factory drain until the school drains.
Right. But I didn't know if the drain might be slow. Sorry, twelve inches may take a lot of water.
Twelve inches is more than enough to handle that area if we already did the elevations on that school.
But you know, when they put them in, it helped out a lot.
Why?
Well, I said, when they put that drain in, it helped out a lot.
It was worse.
It was, yeah, 'cause water was staying in that lot for a month or two before.
But I do need the four jugs on it, Gordon threw it on it, and two engineers to be here a week from Wednesday. And we'll be going over, you'll see this out there. We'll be going over there getting elevations, getting, I gotta get that stuff together and get the engineers to go over it.
So as far as my yard and getting it fixed and all that, I need to deal with the homeowner.
I'll say something to Cody as well.
Or get over him too.
About getting that, where they messed up your property that they need to fix and all some things.
People, people...
I don't know that too many contractors would pull stuff like they did without coming and asking the homeowner whether they get drive on his lot to get concrete in there.
Oh, he drove on your lot, concrete truck?
The concrete truck did, but, but then, they didn't drive all the way up to the house. He used a skid loader and went out and, or you heard the skid loader going with concrete.
Yeah.
Yeah. I had that ass up there.
And it ain't even the guy to come in for the permit. He hired it out to J.C., J.F.C. owned, so then they hired a contractor. So it's a sub, it's a sub. So, that's bad. And then they were sure foot crosses and shit out. I've been up there three times talking.
I've, I've talked to him a few times himself.
I've been there three times. Footers go like that.
I told him exactly, sure, exactly where the property line...
His knee. His knee. No, it's footers like that.
Yeah.
I'll call you. I'll, I'll come up and see you when, uh, when people start pulling late and playing, but you in or, uh, I always talk...
Very, very interested.
I always talk to the people in the area and I see what they're playing and say, "Hey, you think this'll work?"
Good. Appreciate it.
One, last thing, uh, our UBO committee meets on the fifteenth.
Okay.
For the...
Need a motion.
Hey, Jim. Why don't you sit here, why don't you sit here for an hour and a half? Hey, I can give you something on the black committee that maybe you put on the list.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
What?
Yes, I asked you to email that to me.
Oh, you can take it personally.
I'd like to have it. It makes it easier if it's emailed than trying to send it and, and not do anything. You know, do you?
How you doing? You have to care quick.
One thing I was gonna ask, something was asking about sidewalks here in Boston. That's something I'm, I'm looking at.
What, what do you mean?
You know, people confuse it.
No, don't leave us that.
I have a lot.
They either go trailer or Austin. Or I guess Car, Carthong. Or like, or like what we're, by the lead.
Let us know and...
They took that sidewalk over?
Yeah.
That's kind of dumb. Can you do that?
You're supposed to.
Because the blank...
Go ahead.
Because the blank, can you email him? When you get complaints, can you email this to him?
I guess I can.
Well, if he's a white person, shouldn't he be getting those? Dave?
Well, we just need to know if you're, what you're doing, we almost go too deep.
I mean, I can, yeah, I mean, I can send you an email and just say, "Hey, I got a complaint. I'm sending out letters."
Yeah, that's true. Let's do that. Hey, and then the boss state thing, we had to give that up, because we didn't, nobody made a decision on funding. I never did come out there.
Yeah. Talked to, we talked to, uh, so we had to get him on about the money. And then we're pretty, come up.
And the funding was just for their meals and gas. You guys haven't listened in there, just people speak up.
I think we're listening more. No, we're getting ready to get to the open forum if you want to hit my button.
Hit my?
Did you hit it?
Yeah, I'm mad.
Mark called, comes to us, and he didn't get a chance to speak.
I thought we got to the open forum, but I had a couple things to say today.
I mean, I was going down the agenda.
Are you out there?
He trash passing?
No, he's gone.
He's mad.
Want to have a brief?
I have no idea.
I have no idea. I thought he had one.
All of it, but he didn't read it up.
Oh, I don't hate him.
No, I, I was going down the agenda.
You'll be on page.
With him ready to, yeah.
What's the matter though?
I don't know. I didn't know why.
He's got a couple things to say when I walked back to him, so I came back there, Mark was tossing, and he finally threw up his hands and headed out. I don't know what he said.
Yeah, he was the next one to have a floor. I motioned it here.
Second?
Thanks.
Second, third, fourth, and fifth.